The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular council meeting of April the 7th, 2025. Up first, we have some special guests here tonight. We have Coach Grimes there. Do you want to give us a little rundown of the provincial title?
Yeah, we were successful, would have been Saturday, the 29th of March. We finished off the series against Martinsville, coming back actually down one game. We'd lost the first match the week before, 3 to 2. We came home, we had to actually win the game, we couldn't tie, so in order to go to the mini game. The girls were successful, it was a 4-3 win right down like to the last minute, and then this 10-minute mini game, it was within the last minute and a half, they scored to kind of put us over the top, so rather exciting, very, very exciting, doing it at home, too. So, I look back, and I think the last provincial title is U-13 A-level was 10 years ago before the Bearcats program even existed, so it's been a long time.
Excellent.
Yeah, girls earned it, they worked really hard, so, yeah.
Excellent, so, let's welcome the U-13 provincial champion, the Estevan Bearcats. Awesome. Counsel, you want to come back here? Get some photos? Yeah, just make a, try to get everybody in there and...
I wore a special suit today, just for the photo. These girls are as tall as me.
Yeah, there we go, show us that. No, you can put it in the front if you want.
See what happens, this tall guy gets it?
Every time. Excellent, well, there you have it, your U-13 provincial champs. Got the old traditional finger out there.
Doing his ET pose.
Bearcats are coming tonight and sharing your banner. Congratulations. Again, thank you for coming tonight. It was excellent.
Thank you.
You'll be all over the newspapers and the radio. Thank you for coming. We're getting quicker with that. Thank you all for coming. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? Counselor Johnson, Counselor Veroba, seconded by, questions, comments, all in favor? Carried. Original communications, delegations, and petitions, Women of Distinction Awards, looking for us to buy a table. So, as we gear up for the Third Annual Southeast Women of Distinction Awards, schedule takes place on May the 2nd. We are excited about the opportunity to continue celebrating the achievements of remarkable women in our community. On behalf of the Southeast Women of Distinction Awards Committee, I'm reaching out to the city to consider purchasing a table for eight, $300, or individual seats for $40 each. We invite the representative from the city to provide greetings from the city at the event, which I will do. Last year, the event was sold out, tickets available to public, so please don't miss out. Do we have a motion for this request? Counselor Belizser.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was able to attend with Counselor Ford and Counselor Veroba last year, and not only is this a celebration of women in the southeast, but it's also a celebration of businesses, families, and historical figures of the past, so I would like to see the City of Estevan support this with the purchase of a table.
Do we have a second here for that? Counselor Veroba, any questions, comments out there? Seeing none, all in favor? There we go, we have a table. Thank you for that. Up next, the Estevan Exhibition Community Event Permit for the Beer Gardens. Were dated June 13th to the 15th. Do we have a motion to approve this for the X? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Johnson, any questions, comments out there? Seeing none, all in favor? They have their beer permit. Now, up next, same Exhibition Community Event Permit for Cabaret on June 14th. Do we have a motion to approve this? Counselor Veroba, Counselor Belizser, seconded by, any questions, comments? Counselor Mouse, nope, all in favor? There you go. Okay, moving right along, we have the written reports of committees, Estevan Regional Library Minutes for February the 18th. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the library? Counselor Elliott, seconded by, Counselor Mouse, any questions, comments out there? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Sewers Valley Museum Meeting Minutes of March 19th. Do we have a motion to approve these? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Johnson, questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Southeast Saskatchewan Airshed Association Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve these? Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Veroba, questions, comments? Counselor Mouse?
Just wanted to make, uh, thank you, thank you, Your Worship. I just want to make a couple of comments, it's the first time in a long time they've opened. There we go. Sorry, I just wanted to make a few comments about that, if someone doesn't know what that is, because it's a voluntary monitoring system that's set up by, I think there's 10 different places in southeastern Saskatchewan, and they monitor like drill wellheads, they're monitoring a boundary, places like that, for sulfur dioxide, et cetera. Like I say, it's voluntary, because it's not mandatory in Saskatchewan to do this, and we had our first meeting that I was involved in here about three weeks ago.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
I'd just like to point out to Counselor Mouse that I read the report, their meeting, and I noticed that there's quite a bit of equipment and sensors, and air pointers, and equipment that's out in the field that needs to be recalibrated, updated, maybe changed out, and worked on, maintained, to get some positive readings in place, so I'd encourage your committee to move forward on that, that's important, to get us accurate readings. Yep.
Thanks for that, Counselor Mouse?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Sernick. Yeah, Counselor Johnson, that's correct, you also noticed probably there are a couple of ones that are defect. The founder of the group and the executive director, Ken Cross, does that on a regular basis, he has them checked, he has them sent to the manufacturer to have them recalibrated, and he's in the process right now of changing them, because there were a couple of them that were not working properly. And if anyone is interested, you can go on their website and see what the data is live, like it's a live streaming, so you can see exactly if there are problems, if there are problems, it's in the interest of whichever company that that area is causing the problems is to repair that as soon as possible, if there's a leak in a pipeline, if there's dirt coming out somewhere, bad, bad air measurements coming from somewhere, they do that voluntarily.
Good. Okay, do we, we had a second there, all in favor? Carried. Up next, Executive Reports, Tax Assessor, Consent to Acquire Title. We have a couple properties that have been added to the list, recommend, recommending to request authorization to proceed under the Tax Enforcement Act to acquire the above titles. Do we have a motion to accept this? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Veroba, questions, comments? Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to clarify again, all efforts have been made to collect taxes on these properties, the city does not take it lightly when they take over properties, I think it was last month, we took over eight properties, some of them had multiple titles under each one, and those decisions are not made lightly, so again, I definitely second the motion, but it's not a good day anytime the city has to take over property.
Any more questions, comments out there? So, do we have a second? Yeah, we have a second here. All in favor? Carried. Oh, thank God, Zabrowski. Up next, Facilities Manager, RFP Design, Supply and Construction of HVAC Units for the Leisure Center and City Hall. So, the boilers are being replaced, manager's coming up to the podium. We have a couple of tenders out there to choose from, Mid-City and Black, or Black and McDonald. Any comments before we get going? Anything, Dad?
As far as, sorry, when I turn it off? As far as the tenders go, we did receive two tenders. In regards to the equipment, both tenders were very equal in regards to amount, the amount of equipment, the amount of space that there was going to be required to house it, both packages were very similar, aside from manufacturers, really, was really the only big difference. Between the two quotes, Mid-City was approximately $100,000 below Black and McDonald, and below our budget as well, so Black and McDonald was $40,000 over what we had published that we wanted to spend. So, just based on the packages being very similar, the similar equipment quantity and whatnot, I think it's an easy decision to work with Mid-City on that project.
Okay, thank you for that, Chris. Do we have a motion to accept? Counselor Belizser, seconded by Counselor Mouse, questions, comments? Counselor Belizser?
Did Mid-City think they could adhere to the proposed timeline offered by the city for both the Leisure Center and City Hall?
Yes, both companies were very upfront in needing four to eight weeks, just for equipment supply. Both companies were very similar in that, so timeline-wise, again, they were both very equal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments out there? Counselor Johnson?
Are we going to approve the Mid-City Plumbing and Heating contract then? Because I'd like to make a statement after we do the approval.
Okay, so we have a second there, and the recommendation is to go with Mid-City Plumbing and Heating, so all in favor? Carried. Counselor Johnson?
And just to Chris, because it's very important with this installation, and I'm going to say construction, around heating, piping, and things like that, especially in City Hall here, we have a very old building, and it was just announced last week that asbestos awareness in Canada is very important and not to be taken lightly, and in Saskatchewan it was recognized also last week, so I would encourage the contractor, and working with our Health and Safety Department, and yourself, that we do some investigation basically on the piping, just to make sure that we're not breaking any barriers with asbestos, and make sure that we know what we're cutting into, especially in our boiler here at City Hall, and also over at Leisure Services. Okay, please?
Yeah, that was, that was part of the bid package, actually, that they remove a plug sample from the insulation to have it tested prior to deconstruction.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was, it was recognized by both parties that it needed to be done, just based on timing of, or the age, basically.
Yes. Please, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that, Counselor Veroba?
So, that just asks one more question, then, is it already put in there with the bid, that if asbestos was found, there's money allotted already, or would that be an additional amount of money added to the project to remove the asbestos?
That would be an additional cost for the abatement. With Mid-City, they came in at $480,000, $485,000, and that project was approved for $550, so that does leave us a fairly substantial amount there to cover abatement, because there isn't a great deal of insulation there, but I believe there would be enough left within the budget to cover the abatement.
And that is something that could be done within that four to eight-week period, or does it have to wait until the removal?
No, it would have to be done during removal.
Okay.
Because with the, with the modern systems, right now, the, there's a 24-inch, 24-inch air intake exchange that comes into the buildings with the modern equipment, that's not required, so that has to be completely removed before the new stuff even goes in, so it will be done during deconstruction, so we would know.
Excellent. Everything's good. Thank you, Chris, you're off the hook.
Thanks, everyone.
Up next, Water Services Manager, Water Quality Report for March 2025. Do we have a motion to accept this? Counselor Johnson, Counselor Elliott, second it, any questions, comments? For Matt, Counselor Mouse?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have one question, the water report, I read somewhere there was aluminum in the water, and then where was that from?
Thank you, Your Worship, to answer your question, Counselor Mouse, we naturally have occurring aluminum in the water, it also comes in with our coagulant that we use, which is aluminum sulfate, so it uses alum to help coagulate everything into our clarifier and filters.
Excellent. Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just in the wastewater portion of the report, it stated that the electrical is in need of replacement, and that there are some upgrades being done. Is that something that you have put on the capital list in the future years? Or I guess what is your expectation of timeline for that?
Just that, this is just the monthly report?
Oh, we're just doing, okay, sorry, I'll save that question.
We have not for three more reports. Okay, excellent, so, all in favor of the monthly report? Carried. Up next, Water Services Manager, Drinking Water Quality Annual Report. Can you give us any highlights, anything, want to comment on that? Matt, you're good?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I think the report, it does come along as very lengthy, but there was lots that was happening at the plants. I'd say for highlights is, the operators have been doing very well at optimizing the plant, and optimizing what chemicals we're using to help reduce the amount we're using, and also savings on costs, so I definitely want to give a, give notice that they've done a great job at optimizing everything at the plant, and it's been running very well, so.
Excellent. Good to hear. Do we have a motion to accept the annual report? Counselor Belizser, Counselor Veroba, seconded, any more questions, comments? Counselor Johnson?
I'd just like to point out to Matt that it was a very good presentation that you put together here for the Drinking Water Quality Annual Report that we're talking about, and once you read it, and you understand, and you talk about so much in there about how you're fixing all of the little things that you're running across there down at the water treatment plant, it's really nice to know and to take note that we got some really good quality water coming out of that plant, and there's a lot that's being done, and you mention it in your report, and it should be something that's, I guess, we put online for all the citizens to read, because it is actually, it gets them really up to speed with what's happening down there, and all the good things that your staff and yourself included are doing in order to make those improvements, so I thank you very much, it's a very good report, by the way. Thanks.
Excellent.
Thanks, Mayor.
Any other questions, comments out there? Hold on, excellent, okay. So, all in favor of the annual water report? Carried. Counsel Zabrowski, up next again, Water Services Manager, Wastewater Annual Report for 2024. Do we have a motion to accept this? Counsel Veroba, seconded by Counsel Johnson, questions, comments? Counsel Veroba?
I think I already asked it, but just, it's just about whether or not, how long, I guess, when do you think would be appropriate to put it on the capital plan? Would that be next year, four years, that kind of thing? It just kind of concerned me when I seen that in there, that is that something we need to look at sooner than wait till later?
Thank you, Your Worship. To answer your question, Counsel Veroba, we're looking at possibly expanding the wastewater plant in the future, whether it's five, 10 years down the road, to try and be able to release the environment if possible, so when we did do that, we would make it into a capital project, and hopefully get grants through the federal government to be able to pay for some of that electrical upgrades, that'd be kind of part of that upgrade. As it sits right now, we're having a little hard time finding parts for it, but we do have spare parts that we're able to keep it running as is for now, but it's just something that we're looking at for the future, that, keeping it in mind that that's one of the things that needs to be done, so.
Excellent. Counsel Johnson?
And Mayor Sernick, this report also is put together really well, it's a good read, it's mentioning a lot of what happens to the wastewater, at the wastewater treatment plant, and all the things that we're facing, some were mentioned by Counselor Veroba over there about the electrical that's starting to maybe give us some grief, but also, I'd like to point out what we're doing with a lot of our sludge, working with the mines, Westmoreland Coal, and there's another company out there, and we're able to help them along in order to do their reclamation projects with the biosolids, so that's very interesting, and that's very notable, so I'd like to thank your staff, and you again, Matt, for putting another good report together here for us, and letting us know firsthand what's really going on down there, so that's, maybe someday we can take a tour of the place and really get informed on the operations down there. Thank you, Matt. Thanks, Mayor.
Absolutely, we'll definitely plan a facility tour everywhere, waiting for it to get nicer.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, questions, comments? All in favor of the report? Thank you, Matt, thank you for coming tonight, you are off the hook. Richard Land Development. So, I guess up first is the Building Permit Report for March 2025, do we have a motion to accept this? Counselor Elliott, seconded by, Counselor Belizser, any questions, comments on this? Nope, all in favor? Carried. Now, up next, Land Development MR Designation for Mergalod Subdivision. Richard, do you want to run us by this? Give us a little quick rundown, please?
Thank you, Your Worship and Counsel, for this one, the MR Designation, Mergalod's got their metal recycling center, and they want to construct a spur line up to the CPR line. That crosses one of our municipal reserve lots, so the area within that municipal reserve lot that would potentially go to Mergalod should all the pegs fall into place, we have to take their municipal reserve designation off that property.
Yeah, that would be good to get trains coming.
So, that's what the bylaw is for.
Okay, excellent, so do we have a motion to accept this? I guess what we're looking for is recommended to conduct a public hearing. Counsel Veroba, seconded by, Counselor Mouse, questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried, so we will be having a public hearing on that upcoming. Land Development Subdivision, Drater Street Expansion, this is kind of the same thing, we're just looking to send this to a, to a public hearing, so.
Thank you, Your Worship. There's three components to this, one is the subdivision, which would create the three lots in themselves, the second one is the road closure bylaw. As stated in previous meeting, the, the road right away extending east from the developed lots are, is 22 meters in width, and we're looking at reducing that to 20 meters in width, so it could be uniform across the whole length of Drater if this were to be approved. And then the third component is the subdivision itself, and on that one, for Mayor and Counsel, and maybe the city clerk, I haven't had any objections in writing, voice to me, or voice to me necessarily, on the subdivision itself, okay? However, the lady standing, or sitting behind me, I just asked her, and she's got issues with the subdivision itself, not necessarily the, maybe the rezoning or the road closure, and so I'm wondering if there is a way to fit her in.
Yes, we, we are going to make a, we're going to need a motion, and again, this will send to a public hearing, which will, which will be up next in about five minutes.
Yeah, so if maybe what you could do is delay the vote on the subdivision until after the public hearing is done, so she can have our, because she wants to speak to the subdivision itself.
Right now, we're just looking to send it to a public hearing.
Sure.
That's what this motion, so, do we have a motion to send this? Counsel Belizser, seconded by Counsel Veroba, questions, comments? All in favor? Or, sorry, Counsel Mouse, did you? Okay, sorry, all in favor? So, we will have a public hearing on this in a couple of minutes. So, the Drater Street, do we have to do the closure one right now, then?
Yeah, we just asked for a bylaw.
Okay, so for road closure bylaw, Drater Street, do you want to just comment on the road closure, or do you?
Thank you, the, our normal road width is 20 meters, and so for the developed portion of Drater Street, it is 20 meters. Once you get east of the developed portion, it went to 22 meters, and nobody seems to know why. We're looking at reducing it to 20 meters, so it's a uniform width throughout, and then the northern two meters of that roadway would be incorporated into the two northern lots on the subdivision, should the subdivision be approved.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept this? Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counsel Veroba, questions, comments? Counsel Mouse?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
I'm a little faster than your other.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, now, up next, we have public hearings and reports. First, we will do the Mergalod Municipal Reserve Subdivision, so is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to address counsel on the proposed land development services zoning for Mergalod MR? Seeing no one, I have to read it again?
You have to call second nomination.
Second nomination, is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to address counsel on this particular matter? Second call. Dave, was that your hand?
No.
So, okay, so we have nobody here, so there's no one present in the gallery who wished to address this counsel on matter. Do we need a motion?
Not.
Not for that?
Not for motion after. You have to approve subdivision now for this.
Oh, so we're jumping up to the bylaw, you mean?
Nope. Right there.
Oh, okay. I missed that. So, for the Mergalod, we need a motion to accept the subdivision. Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counsel Johnson, any questions, comments? All in favor? Carried. Counsel Zabrowski is good. So, now we have a second public hearing tonight for the Drater Street, land on Drater Street. Is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to address counsel on this proposed land development services report regulating the use of land on Drater Street? Please come up to the microphone. Sorry, I just, can you just introduce yourself first, and then continue on, please?
I sure will. My name is Wanda Mickel, I reside at 900 Drater Street. As you are aware, I received notice that there is a proposal to create three lots in the area, in my area of Drater Street. The lot I wish to address this evening is the one on the south side of the street and adjacent to my property. For the last 25 years, my family have been the ones who have maintained that property, cutting the grass, controlling the weeds, as well as the rodents. cutting the grass, controlling the weeds, as well as the rodents, planting trees, which we did get permission to do, and have spent thousands of dollars each year. I spoke with Mr. Newfeld a month and a half ago regarding my concerns, and was informed that the city has already entered into an agreement in principle for the sale of that property. Imagine my surprise in receiving this information when my husband and I had already approached the city to purchase that very lot. This request went in front of city council and was denied, as we were told the piece of property was needed for drainage, and the city would never sell it. Now I am told that a random citizen approached the city to zone it and sell it to them, and it is being done without any regard of our previous request or consideration of drainage needs. Isn't this the policy of the city council that anyone can request to recruit, to create a lot wherever they choose within the city, and the city will accommodate that request? In the agenda for this evening's meetings, I read the notice that Mr. Newfeld sent to the city that indicated that there were no inquiries regarding the zoning or selling of these properties, which is rather confusing to myself, as, as I brought it to the attention as well as some of my neighbors. Do I understand this to mean that our concerns and our questions are not relevant? I feel if there is a deal being pursued in this fashion, that my request being made well before the present one should be the one being entertained by this council. Therefore, am I requesting this evening that once you've completed your discussions regarding this issue, and no later than Monday, April 14th, that you provide me with written details of your decision, as well as the next steps, so that I may share this with my legal counsel? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we open up to questions? Do we have any questions from council? Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for coming in. So how long ago was it that you had offered to purchase that piece of property?
I'm not sure if Mr. Newfeld found it in council, because I, when I brought it to his attention, I know it did go to council. It would be more than 10 years ago.
Okay.
At the time, we had put considerable expense in and approached the city saying that we're the ones paying the money to do this. We're the ones taking care of it. Can we just purchase it? And that's when it went to council, and that's when we were denied.
Okay, thank you. And further to that, I mean, and I don't know what the city does if they're using that to guarantee drainage. But has, have you seen the city out there doing any work to ensure proper drainage, or?
There, there is just natural draining that goes at the back of that property. Not this year. I didn't see it, but there are some years when we have heavier snowfall that by the, when the snow is melting, the, the water does come up into that property a little ways, until, you know, maybe the ice has thawed enough for it to properly drain. It always does drain. But yeah, it depends how fast the thaw is. It will come up into that property.
Would it be fair to say that property in a way almost protects yours a little bit?
Well, at the back of mine is, is the, is a dip for a gully as well, and it just flows right behind.
Okay. Thank you for your answers. Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Veroba, where? Counselor Veroba, and then Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to speak to what Counsel Elliot was saying, anytime we have any kind of development, since I've been on council in 2016, drainage is always put into the development. So if there was a lot that was used for drainage, I would assume that our engineer would make sure that the proper drainage would also happen. So just to clarify that, because that was one of my questions, it was more than 10 years ago that you inquired with the city to purchase that property. But you're stating today that you are wanting to purchase that property next year.
Oh, I would have purchased it right back then if we could have.
Yeah. So, yeah, you aren't the first person that came to me regarding this subdivision, stating that you had wanted to purchase property there. I have been, like I said, on council since 2016, and I've always been under the assumption that all property the city owns is for sale at all times. And so this is just news to me, so I do thank you for coming forward with that.
Okay, Counsel Johnson?
Mayor Cernic to Wanda. Wanda, that was 10 years ago. I was probably on council then too, myself.
I'm thinking maybe.
Yeah. I, I don't remember this, but why I'm asking this question is, do you have anything in writing or anything?
We, we did receive a letter, and.
You didn't bring it with you. You didn't bring it with you this evening, did you?
I did not. When I spoke with Mr. Newfeld, he said that your records would indicate, because it was, it was brought to council, and I believe he said his predecessor kept a pretty good.
Okay.
Record.
Okay, so I'm suggesting that we have, I can't remember this happening in my time when I was on council, so beg my ignorance. But we need to go back and take a look at if, if there was some mention of this. And if there, if you have those records, if you have that paper, hold on to it. But I want to see what's happening here. City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Johnson. So, yeah, in my time here, I don't recall that request ever coming to council in my time. So we'll definitely go back and dig that up. I have heard from another property owner that they had brought it to the city further than 10 years ago and received kind of the same answer, so we'll definitely try to find something in the records if it was brought to council for discussion.
Thank you, city mayor and city manager. Thanks.
Okay, Counsel Leeser?
To clarify, is your intention to purchase the property so another home can be built on that lot, or to expand the footprint of your existing lot?
You know, at the time, because we were maintaining it, our thought process was, look, I mean, I didn't need to build another building of any sort. It was really more to create a better green space for what was there. Something that, you know, even if the water would come up, it wouldn't really hurt it. That was our intention. And, and we made that clear to the city at the time, that we didn't intend to build something on there. But we were still denied.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Johnson, did you want to make that motion to table this until that information's been properly looked for?
I will make the motion that we table this bit of business on this Drater Street land development.
Okay.
Issue until we get all the facts together, please.
Okay. Do we have a secondary for that motion? Counsel Veroba? Any more questions, comments? All in favor?
So you're still gonna have to call second.
Okay.
And finish off this hearing, so that we can put the motion up.
Okay, excellent. So I just have to call again. Is there anyone, anyone else in the gallery who wishes to address counsel on this particular matter? So everything, you're, you're good, Wanda? No more questions, comments? Okay, so we'll bring this clearing to a close.
Yep.
And if a motion's out there, it's voted on, and we'll get back to the public on this, so.
Yep.
Right? Excellent. Okay.
You can't do these two. You can only do this one.
Yeah, Mark. Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you for coming tonight. And we will move along, give you notice. United Way proclamation, application. Sorry, just a few behind here. There we are. Dear Mayor Cernic, United Way Estevan will be holding our annual day of caring on Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. The United Way Day of Caring is a full day of people helping, giving back to our community with family and friends. Each year, United Way assigns local volunteers to local projects and make a difference where we live. Once again, the United Way asset, May 28th, 2025, be proclaimed. United Way, Day of Caring Day. That way, the Estevan United Way flag will be flown at City Hall during the week, May 26th to the 30th. Any questions? Contact Mrs. Heidi Heselik. Do we have a motion to accept this? Counsel Leeser, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Questions, comments?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Everybody good? All in favor? Carried. There you have our United Way, the Day of Caring, Wednesday, May 28th. Up next, tower lighting requests for national food allergy awareness. They are requesting that the tower be lit up teal. Do we have a teal?
Yes, we do.
We do have a teal. For food allergies directed more than 3 million Canadians, teal is the color. When do they want? They would like request May 17th. That's what we want. So do we have any motion to accept this to turn the tower May 17th? Counselor Leeser, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any questions, comments? Counsel Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. I think it's great if we light up the tower in this color. I know that they had to let us know that they can do that kind of thing. But I also think it's great if we also have the awareness on the city page, which I'm sure we will, just so that people know, because it would be great as well if people start noticing the different colors on the water tower and on City Hall. We usually coordinate the two and just ask why. What, what is that color for? And then go look for the answer, because the city will have it on the page.
Excellent. Counsel Johnson?
Yeah.
Mayor Cernic, just a question. So when the lights get energized on the water tower, how long do they run for? Do they run, is there a timer that runs them for, is it four hours, six hours, what? And now, with the later part of the season, like with, you know, we got sunshine till, like, say, eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the evening, they typically come on later in the evening too, wouldn't they?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Johnson. Yes, I believe we coordinate it with the dusk timeline. And then I think, I believe it runs till 11 o'clock, but I will confirm that with our communications manager. Get back to you.
Thank you.
Counsel Leeser, did you?
Thank you. Just to note, the importance of the color teal is often discussed around Halloween. When we're talking about kids with food allergies and the ability to include them in Halloween celebrations, you'll see that families put a teal pumpkin on their doorstep to show families that there are either non-food options or low allergen food available at that house. So something for the community to keep in mind, both in May and again in October.
Excellent. Did we run that again, this, the inclusive Halloween and the? Okay, oh, sorry, just kind of, I got a question. Okay, do we have, we have a secondary? All in favor? Carried. There you go. May 17th. Look for the teal. What do we have up next? So now we only have one bylaw to go through. Bylaw 2025, 2088, amending zoning for subdivision MR on the spur line. We have second reading. Do we have a motion for second reading? Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Leeser. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Third reading. Do we have a motion for third reading? Counsel Johnson, seconded by Counsel Veroba. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor? Carried. Mergalod will be happy. Up next, we're on inquiries already?
Good job.
Counsel Veroba?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I did have an inquiry today. It was quite passionate, and I've had other people say it. And I know I said it a few months ago and was told it's probably a no-go, but I'd like to bring it up again. 13th Avenue and 4th Street, I believe it's in the works to put lights back up. But I just don't know if, my opinion, I think stop signs are working well. And this gentleman that phoned me today also felt that way. So he was very passionate. I told him I would, he's preaching to the choir, and I would bring his concern up.
Thank you, Counsel Veroba. So this has come up with our meetings with DBA as well. What we've talked about is that we could probably, it's going to be wired anyways. What the concern is, is that if there is an increase in traffic for whatever reason, whether the nukes come or redoing the coal plants, and there's an increase of traffic, that those stops, the four-way stops could start causing some issues. But as long as it's wired there, we could postpone the purchase of the actual traffic light. So I think that's more of a strategic planning discussion we have to have with council to make sure that everyone wants to move that way. But it's definitely an option that has been brought up to our engineering firm as well as contractors.
Oh, good to hear. The other thing is, I've noticed actually in the last probably week to 10 days, two different occasions that large trucks have been going down 4th Street on those two blocks. And so I know the one time about two months ago, I did see the police stop them. But I just think for the people here on the police board, if we could bring that up, that it is something that's happening. It's usually between eight and 10 at night, I noticed it.
Yeah, and it was to comment on that. It has, the last police meeting, it was brought up actually already.
Yeah.
And then, so it'll be taken to the traffic board as well. Maybe, obviously, there's big truck signs, but they're being missed.
Yeah.
So whether we put a light on it or something, so that's already in the process, but.
Okay, and then I also had a business owner speak to me. He lives, he has business on Highway 47 South. He's requesting paving on his street or something to be done with the extra rutting that happens there. So I asked him to write a letter to mayor and council. So I did speak with the city manager. Last year and this year and the last couple of years, this has been brought up. We've kind of found some solutions, but in the same breath, he'd like a longer-term solution. So we can just wait on that one maybe until we get a letter from him, but I did ask him to write a letter and put it on paper.
Thank you, Counsel Veroba. So this has come up in previous years, and we've tried to find some solutions with contouring the road to make sure that the drainage from the hill does not washboard that end. Unfortunately, there's some very shallow utilities, and we went to do that work. It caused an issue. So the only solution is hard surfacing. I know we did get some quotes last year just to know what we were talking about. But I do know that into 2026, there probably is an option for council to consider hard surfacing at least a portion of that road to stop the washboarding from happening.
Okay, and I can mention that to him, but I still think it'd be beneficial for us if we get the letter and then we have it on file. Because like I said to him, we've talked about this a few times. We get the solution, and it is satisfactory to the people that we're talking to. But he isn't satisfied, and so I said, then we need to see it on paper, have the letter, and then we'll bring it to all of council.
Let him know. That's how you get things done. Write a letter.
We did.
You good? Counsel Mouse?
Yeah, I don't have an inquiry, more of a greeting. I was recently invited to go to St. Mary's School, Eric of Rock, or enter grade two and three class, and talk about how we make decisions in council. That was a lot of fun. And I'd just like to say hello to them, and it's good to see that they're teaching kids at that age already about how things work in a council, in a city council. Yeah, and it was great. So hi to, hi to the kids and hi to Mrs. Brock.
Good to hear, good to hear. Counsel Elliot? City treasurer?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Assistant clerk?
Nothing, Your Worship.
Nothing. Mighty. Counsel Dabowski, you got anything for us tonight?
Oh, I bet you this doesn't go.
Oh, just give us a second.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. Say something.
Is it all good?
Yeah.
All right. So I was at the Stripper's Hockey Tournament on Friday evening, and I think it's Friday evening. And I overheard a lady at the concession mention something about one of the vending machines in the affinity center had ate her $5 bill. And the person running the concession actually said that that's something that just, it just happens all the time. People, I guess, lose money in this specific vending machine all the time. And so if city clerk or city manager maybe has some sort of insight on anything that can be done about that, whose responsibility that would be, it'd be a, a, a clarification.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for the question, Counsel Dabowski. We actually have the leisure services manager here that can speak to that.
Oh. Thank you for coming, Erin.
Yeah, just right place, right time, I guess. So it does, I have to admit, it has come up often. The machines are maintained by Coca-Cola. We do have our staff trained that if they do come to the front desk or if we have beverage service staff in the lounge, then we will work with that individual in order to try and provide them with a reimbursement. They certainly use their judgment, because it is something that can sometimes get interesting when some of the youngsters understand that they can come to the front and say that their money has been eaten, and then we're providing maybe more generous reimbursement. money has been eaten, and then we're providing maybe more generous reimbursements than are required, but we are working with it. I did talk to Judy earlier today about maybe some better signage, just to try and help direct that traffic, but we do our best to keep the machines maintained, and it's just, we're at the mercy of, of that company sometimes.
Okay, Counselor Veroba?
Thank you, Erin. I do believe, though, is there not a 1-800 number? I remember I phoned the 1-800 number when I was a few years younger, and they mailed me a check back for the amount of money that I was missing, so they have ways of checking into that, maybe they don't anymore.
Good, then.
Yeah, thank you for that. They do, we just actually had a machine updated, and I did just go out, actually, today, and that is a bit, it's more challenging to find than maybe it has been in the past, so improvements we can certainly make.
Excellent. Where are we now? Counselor Johnson?
Yes, Mayor Sernick, I just, to city manager, and I'd like to pass along hats off to the roads crew, road sweeping crew for using the large machines and collecting all that dry, heavy sand, dust, debris that's on the streets. It's sure made a difference. We've really went at it vigorously, I'm going to say, earlier, maybe, than most years, because it's been so dry, but getting all that picked up, it sure, sure helps. And I'd also like to pass along a high five to those two ladies that are operating the hot sea pressure washer there with the trailer, and blowing off the boulevards from all that heavy debris, that snow, that grime, that sand, and everything else, that dust that is on them, and now, they did Highway 47 coming into Estevan, and they've done a few more boulevards, I see. They're a tough crew, they're, they're doing a heck of a good job, so just pass it along that it's not going unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Leeser?
Thank you. I have a few tonight. Earlier this month, I was able to attend the Chamber of Commerce Coffee Talk, that the guest speaker was our chief of police. He did talk about current crimes concerning in the city of Estevan, and really focused on the idea that living in a safe community comes down to the involvement of all of the residents, so if businesses have areas of concern, the police are happy to consult and talk about safer lighting options, different layouts that would promote visibility and safety to the business. They also talked about how, as a community, they do rely on people calling in if there's suspicious activity. One of the concerns that was raised at that time was these buildings that have the boarded-up windows, and what the community expectation should be of those buildings, and so a discussion was had that if the concern is weeds, or something of a nuisance matter, pets, that would still be going to fire and bylaw, but if it is that somebody has removed one of those boards, and you believe somebody is living or engaging in activities inside those properties, then that is a call to the police, so that it can be looked at immediately. I did want to remind the community that even though it's the Chamber of Commerce Coffee Talk, they're open to the full community. They don't need you to be a business owner, you don't need to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. They happen the first Wednesday of each month, and the next one coming up is going to be on economic development, so just something to keep on your calendar. The city's next Coffee with Council is also coming up, it's going to be an evening this time. We know that not everybody's able to make the daytime meetings, so on Thursday, April 24th, from 7:00 until 9:00 p.m., the community's welcome to come out, meet with counselors, have an informal discussion, ask any questions you might have. And then, on Tuesday, April 15th, the Estevan Community Wellness Committee meets at the Estevan Comprehensive School with the intention of fostering a sense of community. Being able to come out and meet other people is not always easy in Estevan, you might feel like you need to know someone to go with, but the community is gathering, people can bring games or play those that are there, it's a free event, and everybody is welcome.
Excellent. Thanks for that. City manager?
Nothing to add, your worship.
City clerk?
Nothing, your worship.
Good, 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 almost done, so yeah, this is the past weekend, sorry.
Sorry, your worship, just to add, Counselor Leeser, there's no, the Coffee with Council. Sorry. Thanks, Counselor Mouse. So, just to add, Counselor Leeser's inquiry, that Coffee with Council is at the fireside room at the Days Inn, just to clarify.
Thank you for that. Yeah, and just, obviously, the past weekend, past five days, we had the 41st Annual Stripper Spring Bus Hockey Tournament, so congratulations, everything went off without a hitch. Congratulations to all involved, and especially congratulations, or thank you, to the city staff, who I imagine it's a little hectic for five days going around there, there's a lot going on, the, it was, it was good, the weather was nice, contributed, so that's all I have, anybody else, I think we're good, so we will look for a motion to go into committee. Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Veroba, all in favor? We are in committee.